Shalom, welcome to The Jewish View. My name is Rabbi Nachman Simon with the Chabados of Dahmar, together with my co-host Mark Ronachov, studying by news service JbizTechValley.com. And now, as we can see, he's the weekly columnist for the Jewish Press.
Right, and I have a column called Albany Beat, and I talk about the issues of how government relates to the Jewish community, or doesn't, as the case may be. And that particular issue, if viewers remember, I have a column in there about our guest, Assemblywoman Ellen Jaffe, and how she's been bullied by her fellow Assembly members. So, over the East Ramapo School District issue. So, if you want to go online and read the article, that would be great.
Or you could buy a paper or something. But you have to be a salesman.
But now it's, but now it's all, everything's online.
All right.
With us, we have a very special guest with us today. Someone who I really am honored that he found the time and made the time to come here and is the Majority Leader of the Albany Common Council, Dan Herring. So, welcome, welcome, Dan, to The Jewish View.
Very good.
Thank you very much, and thanks for inviting me.
And you represent Ward 13, which is the Melrose Neighborhood, essentially?
Which was actually the boundaries, pretty much.
That's actually one of the simpler boundaries. It's a, almost a rectangle, which actually goes from the State Office Campus, between Washington and Western Avenues, down to Albany High School.
And the SUNY Albany Downtown Campus?
Right, onto the latest redistricting.
Yeah.
Essentially lost some streets off of Western Avenue, I think Tudor, Cambridge.
Right.
Those groups in there, and I picked up down to the U Albany Downtown Dorms, as it were, Rebecca Hall. So, moved a little further down.
Albany High, including?
Yes, Albany High is now.
Is Albany High, just so they're making a new athletic field. Was city part of that, or it's state money?
Yes. Well, but, you know, it's both, it's going to be local. It was bonded money from the school district.
The school district has their own budget, their own vote, their own elected officials. It's totally separate, and they...
Right, except for the people that paid the taxes are the same.
The same people.
The same people, but it's a separate tax.
Yes, absolutely.
It's not a common council tax, just to let you know.
Right, which a lot of people don't realize.
That's just so people realize.
All right, so we're here to inform people.
So, basically, you, you know, the goings-on on the State Office Campus is very important to the people in your district also.
Absolutely.
Because as that develops or doesn't, as the case may be, the residents can be impacted one way or the other, which are your constituents.
That's correct, and that's been an ongoing issue for 20 years, is the State Office Campus.
Now, way back 20-plus years ago, the representative of the 13th Ward was also the Majority Leader. Was Bob Van Amberg the 13th Ward?
Well, actually...
Or Joe Lynn, or?
If you're looking at that history...
Yeah.
What, that was, no, Bob Van Amberg was, I don't believe was the Majority Leader. He was the Councilman for the 13th Ward. Joe Lynn was the President of the City Council.
Okay.
Joe Lynn unfortunately died.
Right.
And Bob Van Amberg was appointed into his position as President of the Common Council.
Uh-huh.
That opened a seat up, which, obviously, his seat in the 13th Ward...
Right, but it opened it up because Bob Van Amberg was...
Became the President of the Common Council.
Right, but he was representing the 13th Ward.
Yes, that's correct.
So, then he became the President of the Common Council.
Right, not the Majority Leader.
Not the Majority Leader.
That's what I thought, the question.
I thought that's what I had read, but, okay.
And then Stephen Raffens was appointed in as the...
By the Mayor.
By the Mayor.
And then you opposed Stephen Raffens in a primary.
In a primary, that's correct.
Boy, 20 years, that must have really been earth-shattering around here.
That was, it was quite a race.
Because no, I mean, no one ever opposes, you know, has a primary. You must be one of the first primaries.
It was one of the first, yes, it was one of the very first.
What made you get up the courage in your gut to do that?
Well, it, again, it sounds somewhat cliche, but it was a neighborhood situation. It was the start, there was, I wasn't really the first. There was rumblings around, there was cracks perceived in the political cracks in the establishment walls, as it were. There was a number of people, you know, stepping up at this time. There's a lot of different movements. There was, at the same time, there was, you know, the movement on the school board, the CARE campaign, that type of thing, was, you know, in its infancy. But there was a lot of public neighborhood kind of action, and there's kind of resentment toward the establishment as it was, with the kind of, you know, lifetime sinecure type of operations that went on. So, and I got involved in that, and did the neighborhood. And, you know, my kids were young, and so we were a lot of the organizations, and that type of thing. And I had a history of, you know, as a student, liking politics and being in that...
Because you were working for the State Office of Mental Health?
At that time, yes.
At that time?
Yes.
So, and that, now, if you work for the state, the governor doesn't want anyone in elected office if you, if you work for the administration?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, at that time, I didn't. I did go through, I did, I did get a, I think it's the Office of, especially, I'm trying to remember the name of the office. It's the federal office that actually administers the Hatch Act.
Right, right.
And I asked for determination from them before I even ran.
I see, so because the mental health gets federal funds?
Right, and it was determined on that that my, you know, it has part of it, but a good part of mental health also, and I wasn't in direct line of Medicaid-funded administration or anything like that, that mine was considered state funding.
Okay, so, so did you, I'm going to ask this as indelicately as possible, because if I, if I search for the words, I'm going to mess it all up. But were you not a fan of Mayor Jennings?
No, I would say, no.
And I don't mean to put it the wrong way, but I'm just...
I know where you're going, because, you know, I think in a lot of the politics, that, that it wasn't all that clear. What I was, let's put it this way, I was a supporter of Harold Joyce.
Oh, okay.
So, when I first went into the political system, as it were, I would be described as probably a Joyce person.
Mm-hmm.
And...
Truth be told, I was also.
Okay, there we go.
My first campaign.
And then, you know, I didn't, you know, Jerry was at the high school at that point, and my son, I knew Jerry, and I had, you know, there wasn't a, against him, and he basically, when that primary came up, you know, you had to take sides.
Right, one side or another, right.
And I, you know, I was a Joycean.
Were you part, were you the President of the Melrose Neighborhood Association, or?
No, I was not. At that time, there was no Melrose Neighborhood Association.
No, there wasn't, oh, that sprung up after you got elected?
Right, yes.
I just think it's, and when I read this, I just thought it was fascinating, because I never would think, you know, I mean, I remember when Harold Greenstein was chosen by Mayor Corning, and he was literally chosen. He said, "I want someone Jewish in the, in the Common Council, and, you know, you're the guy." So, he said, "You're going to be in," and that's it. No one thought about opposing or primary.
And essentially, that was the kind of political philosophy, I think, that was starting to be opposed by the time when I came along, that the kind of, that kind of appointment to a lifetime position.
So, you're not opposed to primaries?
No, I, I, I can't be, can I?
No, you can't. But here you are, you know, 22 years later, and you're still in the same seat. Have you ever been primaryed?
Oh, yes, the, well, I primarily, I won the primary with Stephen Raffens, obviously, and then the next year, I was primaried again.
Okay.
So, I ran.
And not since then have you been primaryed?
No, no, I have not, no.
You must be doing either a great job, or it's a very placid neighborhood.
Well, we had two very hard, I mean, I won by 22 votes the first...
The first time?
First time.
Right.
Second time by a little bit more.
And then when Jamie Lockwood, a Republican, you just, that was a landslide for you.
Right, and then she ran in the general election. Then Looker has run a couple of times in the general election.
Right. Tim Looker, right. Okay, so, we've got a lot of other things to talk about, but I just wanted to introduce you to the audience and get, you know, because our audience probably doesn't remember 1993 either, so I just wanted...
Well, listen, you can't accomplish anything unless you're elected. First, you have to be elected, and now you can accomplish something in office.
Well, yeah, but, you know, and then you rose to the ranks of Majority Leader, which you've been Majority Leader for, what, 10 years now?
Right.
Yeah.
I'm actually the longest-serving Common Council member, right, at this point.
You're the dean?
That's right, the dean.
Dean Herring, okay, well, I should have brought some herring.
Bad joke, Mark.
I know, it's very bad, very bad.
Again, not the first time I've heard it either.
I know that, so, okay. And when you wanted, when you first ran for Majority Leader, you also had a little bit of a battle, didn't you?
Yes, there was a little bit, you know, some other people wanted it.
Dominic Casalaro wanted it, and that kind of split the council, but ultimately, you won unanimously.
Right.
Or anonymously, one or the other. So, and it's been a love fest ever since?
Not quite, but it's close.
Well, I noticed that everyone who supported Dominic, pretty much, except for one or two, are not there anymore.
I think that's true, yes.
Yeah.
Just, you know, maybe we can start, Mark, with just the basic civics, like, say, our audiences, including myself, to say the least, is uneducated. Is it like the Common Council is somewhat like the Assembly in the state? I mean, the mayor makes the budget, and you have to agree to it? Or what are some of the major laws that you would have to deal with, or issues, I should say?
Well, I'd say, the model, what you say is correct. If you want to model the Common Council, it is of the City of Albany. It's, it's more like the state would operate with an executive, and there's a legislative branch and executive. As opposed, for example, a lot of, as a town board. It's not a board, like County or, you know, any of these. The suburbs have the town boards, which are generally seven, eight people, where the supervisor is one of the members. The City Council works more as a true legislative body, very much like the state does, and then the mayor would be the equivalent of the governor. And you have an executive budget that is presented to you. So, you have that whole budgetary function, like the state, where you would have to, you have to approve a budget. And laws are essentially passed in the council, and then are, go to the executive to be signed, and then there's a whole veto process, if that was, very much like the...
The state one.
The state. Now, and obviously, I mean, this, not obviously, the stuff that we work with, you know, it's the daily operations of a city government. We have the same areas that the state would be interested in, but basically drilled down into the true local level. So, where you have the Department of Transportation, we have DGS, and, you know, where you have...
And when you have Office of General Services, you have Department of General Services.
General Services, right. So, we have all these, you know, reduced...
Agencies.
Agencies that do the same kind of functioning, functionality as the state would have.
I found what I was going to, I wanted to introduce my audience, you to the audience. You were born in Amherst, Massachusetts.
Right.
You were raised in Long Island, Uniondale, so you must be a Rangers fan.
I actually am, you're thinking I should be an Islanders fan.
You must be an Islanders fan.
No, because they weren't, they weren't even there when I...
They weren't even there, okay. And I got to tell you that at the campus, U Albany radio station, when it was AM, WSUA, they broadcast the first live Islanders game. And it was carrier current, but they went down, and they were the first station, radio station ever to do a live broadcast. So, anyway, that's our connection with Uniondale. And you have a bachelor's in social science from Binghamton University.
Right.
You were a veteran in the US Air Force?
Yes.
And you were honorably discharged in a, with what rank?
A Staff Sergeant.
Staff Sergeant, okay. And Vietnam War, you served in?
Yes.
Okay. Three children, three grandchildren, or more grandchildren?
Nope, three.
Three, okay.
Three and three right now.
And you worked for the, as a budget analyst for New York State, for Department of Labor and Office of Mental Health?
Correct.
Okay, so you're a numbers wonk?
Yes.
Just like Comiso is with the Controller's Office?
I suppose, okay. We come from that same area of the country.
And you, now, you're the Director of the Dockside Education Program for the New Netherlands Museum Replica Ship Half Moon.
Right.
Explain that, talk about that a little bit.
Well, I know if you've noticed, the Half Moon isn't with us anymore.
Right.
We lost that. But the Half Moon was a replica ship. I became involved with it through my neighborhood, actually, my street, where some of the kids became students on it and sailed, and I knew their parents. And one of the parents had volunteered on the ship, and I was introduced to Chip Reynolds, who was the captain, and became involved. And part of their program is when the ship is in port. It's very interesting that they, the schools would come down, and they have these tours that they would take through the ship, you know, these historical tours, especially for fourth graders, which, because that New York State history lines up with the curriculum for them, so that was a part of their educational process. And they, they came from all over. We were very successful with the education program. There was, every, one of our sections was booked every year, and it would come up for about 20 days. And then the other big part of the Half Moon, if you remember, they would take the student crew and actually sail the ship down to New York and recreate Henry Hudson's trip up the Hudson River. And would come here, you know, in September of 1609, like Henry Hudson did in 1609.
There was, there's a Jewish Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts group, and they actually slept on the Half Moon one night. I remember Shmuel Kochman, you know how tall he is? He slept, you know, he had a problem sleeping in the bunks.
Well, you know, one of the greatest Half Moon, greatest Half Moon stories, you know, significant Half Moon stories was, it was actually with a crew of students in New York Harbor in 9/11.
Wow.
And so, the Half Moon and the crew actually witnessed 9/11, and was, and then they, you know, they had trouble getting out. They finally got it up, literally up, I think, to around Peak School or something like that, where they came and took the kids off from the bus and took them down, but...
Wow.
The Half Moon was a witness.
It was right there. So, where is the Half Moon now, you say it's not...
Well, what happened was the Half Moon, its owner, the man that actually built the ship and actually owned it, was the sole owner of the New Netherlands Museum, which was a private, not-for-profit entity. Part of his plan, in his own mind, was to, at some point, bring the ship to Holland, or to the Netherlands, and that would be, it's, you know, he was an, you know, I'm not saying older, he was our age, but he was getting out of the, getting out of the business, as it were, and he wanted, you know, somehow to wrap this up, and that's what he decided to do with the ship, was to, and that Horn, the City of Horn, which some believe is the starting point of where...
Henry Hudson.
Henry Hudson actually picked up the Half Moon. That city...
Adopted the Half Moon, the ship.
Well, adopted, actually, set up a museum, and...
Too bad that something like Albany or the Albany County could have brought it, and, you know, used it like USS Slater, that would be such a...
That was exactly the hope, and it was something, but it didn't work out.
My recollection of the, when they were building the Half Moon, I was working for radio stations around New York State, and one of them was in Jamestown. And unfortunately, the guy who was building it...
Yes, the actual builder died.
Was, died, and he was from Jamestown. So, I had that local angle for them, unfortunately, it was a tragedy, you know, but, yeah.
It was a beautiful program.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, and to his memory and his honor, I mean, the, you know, to the man who passed away. Anyway, Albany 2030, right, we're at 2015.
Right.
Fifteen more years. There was a comprehensive plan, that you were chairman of this board...
Yes.
For this plan. What happened to it, is it still in existence?
Very much so.
Because I see a lot of people who were on, Board Members, Nick DiAntonio...
Well, there are a number of them who were...
And others who are listed on here, John Rosenzweig, Jim Sano, they're not in the positions that they were when they were appointed.
Right, and the reason that, you'd notice that's quite a large commission.
List, yes.
And the reason it was done, and it worked out well, in that sense, was, it was, like, a lot of them were trying to get as many people involved as possible for something like this. And you mentioned John DiAntonio and a lot of this. They were in there also as a condition of their employment. They, at the time, he was a Department...
Nick was Commissioner of the DGS.
DGS, and that, right. And Jim Sano was on the Planning Committee from the Common Council, and the whole Planning Committee was on that commission. We had about 30-something people, neighborhood. It reduced, it was through some self-selectivity, it kind of came down to more, about 15 or so like that, a hard-working group.
Okay, and where, what is your plan, where do you see Albany in 2030?
Actually, it's a very, it's a dynamic plan. I'll get you a copy of it, if you'd like to take it. It was very, well, we had a very good consultant that worked on this stuff, and it's, there's a lot of measurable metrics in it. Every year, the Planning Department had all the goals or tested to, if they have reached them, and, or to what degree they have or making progress. For example, one of the big goals, and it was the actual, the re...
Development?
The redevelopment of the zoning code for the City of Albany. And right now, that is underway. It's a big, big job. We've got some grants, it's a million-dollar-plus operation to get this thing done.
Okay.
What would be a major turning point, like making it to residential, into corporations?
No, well, one of the best examples is the, is the reuse of different areas, for example, like the Warehouse District, you've heard a lot now.
Yes.
Okay, the Warehouse District, you know, they got some very successful restaurants have gone in there, some people are starting to do some loft-type of apartments in there, but the problem is, the thing's zoned industrial.
Oh, see.
So, what makes it, and that, what that problem is, that now if someone wants to do this, you have to get a variance. And to get a variance, they go, they have to go through a whole separate process, an expensive process for the applicant. And it also doesn't allow for good planning, because you don't know who's coming in, what their plans are, because they don't know what, what they're allowed to do.
Is there any way in the Planning Department that they could restructure the roads? Because the roads were built for a different time. The roads down there especially were built for the, you know, 1600s, 1700s, where we had horse-drawn carriages and trolley cars, you know.
Well, what they would, what they could do is that if it's rezoned to the point where people know what they can do, what the, if the expectations were clearer, but it can be there, people could go in, and they could propose something like that, and it would be allowed. Right now, I think it'd be very difficult for someone to come in and change roads, not knowing what actually is going to happen.
Right, but instead of someone coming in, can't the city come in?
Well, like, they would have to base it on something.
Something?
You know, why...
Take out the cobblestones, you know, make it more shovel-ready for someone.
Well, that, that might be, but that'd be a big, and who's going to pay for it?
Okay, so that's where you're looking for private...
I mean, you're talking, I just was at the brand-new Huck Finn amusement park with my grandchildren, and I just, it just, is this the area? Because it seemed to me, when I was getting there, it's like such a waste. I mean, it's a half a mile away from downtown, and it's decrep, you know, there's nothing happening there.
Well, there's more happening, there's more happening now, but you're, that impression you have was the way, what, it's improving from that point now. I think there's like, well, you have the whole Huck Fins, then you have the old Hoffmans next to it now, where you probably had the grandchildren.
Yeah, right.
And that had, that had to be all done through a variance, because that, and that wasn't zoned correctly. So, you got back to this point, that, that's what this rezoning is doing, is trying to take these areas that need this kind of redevelopment, make it easy for people to come in, propose their projects, and get to there. So, the 2030, and that's a list of all these things, all our goals that we want in that 2030 Plan, and how to get to them.
So, you're not meeting anymore? You've already made your report?
No, that's, that's report, but it's...
You've already made the report?
Oh, yes.
And you're not meeting anymore?
No.
You're just monitoring, maybe, to see how it's going?
Yes, it's being accepted.
Okay, great. What about, since we're down on Broadway in the Warehouse District, the planning project for the future of 787 and the waterfront? There was some public hearings, public meetings about it.
Yes.
I wanted to know what your thoughts were, if you have any, it's out of your district, but...
Right, but it's, you know, it's, it's part of the, again, one of the long-term goals of the 2030 Plan was the reconnection to the waterfront, which acted the way they, they phrased it, to get more out of that waterfront, which is heavily federally involved, just because of the nature of the river, because that's the federal...
Jurisdiction.
Jurisdiction in there, and the port, and then, and even the state. So, the city has very, in a sense, a little control of that, and certainly not the resources to do anything that, you start talking about taking down 787 or something, even...
That's incredible, yeah.
Costs really on this. So, this has a lot to do, this last thing that you're referring to, actually was, I was federally funded, and basically it was a brainstorming session, get people's ideas of what possibilities might be there, even on a regional basis, of, you know, how this 787...
So, what would be, if you were king of Albany, what would, and you had a magic wand, what would you like to see quickly, in a few minutes, if you could sum up what you'd like to see?
Oh, I think, most people, I mean, somehow they'd like it gone or modified to such an extent that we could get to the river, be it platformed out, you know, take that road, drop it down...
At grade.
Or come across like that.
And put condos there, or just like New York City?
Well, big park, or, you know, you could use it for all sorts of uses, you know.
I mean, I look, you talk about New York City, I mean, I look at the FDR Drive, and they're building, putting the buildings over the FDR Drive to look out to the East River. So, I mean, you could, you know, if you get a development...
And on the West Side, basically, they just go right, right over, and the West Side area is right underneath, and then you go right to the river. So, that's, it's, it's all about the access to the river. That's what, that's what people want, they really, and we have that somewhat now, and it's been quite successful with the Corning Preserve and Jennings Landing and that area and there. Now, you know, so people, that was a test, but people would really like that expanded.
I have to ask you a quick yes-or-no question. Red light cameras in favor, you like it, you don't like it?
My answer is yes, and I think we have to try them, and I think they can work on several different levels.
New Police Chief Brendan Cox, I know he was approved unanimously, so, as the new police chief, but, I mean, what do you like about him, and...
It was a great pick. I mean, I think we have to remember that he was, you know, under Chief Krokoff, he was the second commander, and his task was the whole, basically, he was the implementer of community policing. And he was the most hands-on of anybody on that command staff under that project. So, this is his creation, probably has the most invested in it.
Did the city really do a nationwide search for a new police chief?
Well, I was on the police committee, and yes, we did.
You did, and you couldn't find anyone in the whole...
Well, we found a number of people.
Oh, okay.
We had, we had 30 people come in, and we riddled down, we did like 15 interviews from people all around the...
Country.
The country.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's, and we had, we had the dean of the School of Criminal Justice on that committee, we had Alice Green on that committee. We had people that knew what they were doing. And, and it was, it was difficult, but Stephen Krokoff paced that.
Well, Brendan Cox, then...
He was not in that...
Oh, he wasn't in that group?
No, no, no. Well, we interviewed for the...
Police Chief.
Police Chief, that was the one that, the ultimate result of that was Stephen Krokoff becoming the Chief of Police.
Right, but I'm saying, what about for this round with Brendan Cox?
Oh, for this round, well, there's no, there was not a formal... Police chief, that was the one that, the ultimate result of that was Stephen Krokoff becoming the chief of police.
Right, but I'm saying, what about for this round, with Brendan Cox?
Oh, for this round, well, there's no, there was not a formal...
Nationwide search?
Nationwide search, I mean, I, they might have, that's, but it was not a formal search, there was no committee selected to go out.
Oh, that's what I was asking about, so...
Well, you felt, I mean, I would think also, but just hear your opinion, just like someone, like you say, inside the police department, you know what you're getting, number one?
Yes.
Because even whoever you hire has all the best credentials, I know, and then when he gets into the job, he just doesn't fit. So, you got a known, you know, quantity, so that would be, you know, better choice.
Right, I think, I think the benefit of that, as it were, was, was try to go with the internal appointment.
Oh, really? Okay.
I mean, I think, you know, that was the preferred way to go, if somebody could qualify.